Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's called to order the meeting of Meramec Planning Board for Tuesday, October 15th, 2019. Let me offer the usual reminder to everyone to please sign in on the clipboard that's on the table in front of me if you're going to address the board tonight. And also make sure the microphones are turned on and that you bring it close to you and speak clearly into it so the folks at home can hear you. Let's see, our next meeting after tonight is November 5th, 2019. It's 7:00 PM in this room. Let me appoint Nelson into a voting member, as a voting member, so that we've got a quorum. We'll put him in for Lynn's position. Concludes the call to order. Planning and zoning administrators report. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a brief introduction tonight. Seated to my left is Casey Wolf. Casey is the town's new assistant planner, started with us on September 30th after a couple of stints in a couple of smaller towns here in New Hampshire and Massachusetts. So we're glad to be back up the full staff and Casey's getting her feet wet, spending a lot of time getting familiar with the regulations, ordinances, and master plan of the community. And you'll be seeing a lot of her over the next several years, I hope.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, Casey. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. I look forward to working with you as well. Anything else?
The only other thing I wanted to mention is we only have one meeting scheduled right now for the month of November, which is typical because of the Thanksgiving holiday. We do not have any new applications for that meeting. However, under state law, we must meet once per month, so we can't really cancel that meeting. I was hoping to try to get a bug in the ear of NRPC to try to get the final revisions to the sidewalk bicycle PED plan finished, so we can get maybe some action on that at our meeting in November. And I know, Nelson, you had offered to potentially put a bug in Matt Weykin's ear to try to push that along a little bit, since I had asked him a few weeks ago, and I haven't heard back from him at this point.
Which I did do today.
Excellent.
And he said he is waiting on some information from you. And this is what he said.
Okay.
Just the messenger. And so I suggest you call him tomorrow.
I will do that.
And have a discussion with him and see what it is. He wants to know how to wrap it up. You know, we have this sort of blank section where we were going to-
We're gonna have a blank section.
-put in the comments from the DOT.
Yes.
And so that's gotta be just cleaned up, so that it becomes a good document.
Sure.
The other thing I mentioned to you, since we're on the subject, I would've saved it normally, is I would hope that we could maybe entertain developing a master plan for the town for sidewalks, which is suggested by, recommended by our master plan and which requires some budgeting. I think we can't continue to get freebies. And so maybe you could, I mentioned that to, to him also, and maybe you could discuss that at the same time.
I can start the conversation.
Get a budget number or something that we can plug in.
Sure.
Okay?
Sure.
Thank you, that's all I have.
All right. Any other comments, questions for staff?
Just a quickie. I noticed that the flat yard, or whatever they are, the apartments on Executive Drive are getting a bit close to finished. I hope nobody's gonna give them a CO until such-
Won't use the microphone, my friend.
Oh, sorry.
I hope nobody's gonna give them a CO until we get the traffic light situation. I mean, I've just come through there tonight. It was sheer chaos.
They have met the requirement of the planning board's approval to get the permit in place and to install. The town, the state, and the developer are all working on tweaking, working with the protocol for those peer-to-peer connections and have continued to work on that.
Okay.
There are still some things that are being worked out, but it's an active and ongoing dialogue.
Thank you very much.
So the system's actually installed and in place?
It has been installed for several weeks. There was a period of time where it was not being activated, but it has been activated. And we've been getting direct feedback from both police departments and several interested residents who have commented on how things have been going out there.
Thank you. Not today or last week, but probably in the last month, I've gone through there two or three times at 5:00, 5:30-ish, which is odd for me. I don't usually head that direction. And my observation at those two times was fairly normal intersection, you know, five or six cars ahead of me, light turns green, we all went through. Life worked out fine. And the other directions were more or less doing the same thing.
The bogging down point seems to be the Executive Park and Amherst segment.
Yeah. Yeah, that light's always been a problem. Yeah. But even then, that's, that's kind of the path that I took, was going from where Exit 11 dumps you off over by the gas station, crossing over, both, going through both lights, and then heading up, turning on Turkey Road.
And I, just a reminder for those who are watching in for the board, that, you know, this was never intended to be a solution to that intersection's problems. It was meant to be an incremental improvement because of the situation and the volumes that we're dealing with out there. It really is more of a capacity issue than it is anything that signals could take care of. Majority of that capacity issue is the turnpike itself, which, as we know, is slated to be widened in the upcoming years.
On the Gilbert Crossing development, how many of their buildings are occupied now?
Just the one.
Just one?
They're getting close. They have, actually, Robert was out doing a site inspection today for the next building.
I keep an eye on the traffic there, too, because I drive by there probably more in the rush hour times.
As do I.
And I wanted to see if there's people that have to pause to turn left to get into the site, or waiting to get out of the site. Obviously, with one building, it's no, it's no measure to try and guess what that means yet, but so far, seems okay. Other comments or questions for staff?
I just want to go back to Alistair's comment, was that he said at the beginning, he hopes there's no CO until we've resolved this issue at Exit 11.
Because the permit has been activated and DOT has signed off on it, I have no ability to hold off on a CO based on that point itself.
Oh. So they've installed the thing-
They've installed it, which was what was required. The DOT has given there a green light that, yes, you have met our obligations. We actually received a letter from DOT today stating that for purposes of the CO. It's going to be a constant adjustment out there. That's the nature of this particular type of system, is it allows for constant tweaking in the peer-to-peer system.
Who does the tweaking?
It is done by, the DOT is going to ultimately have the final say on the tweaking. They will have control ultimately on that. My understanding is that they coordinate with the, I think the control center is actually located in California, but the ability to manipulate it comes from DOT. It's a complex system. That's all I can say.
Sounds more complex than it did at the time we gave the approval.
I'm not sure if I got that impression out of it, but obviously, the whole concept of peer-to-peer is that it does a little bit of learning of where the traffic pattern's going and what the lights next to it are requiring of it. And so I think, at least the presentation that I understood, was that it took some time to figure out how to make it work right. That said, the whole point of doing this, and DOT's interest in doing it, is that DOT is hoping that they're finding a solution that they can apply in other places. And as far as I know, that continues to be true. And so we've got the applicant and the DOT all trying to make the intersection work as best it can to find out whether this technology is worth doing in other places. So I don't think that DOT will do what we sort of might stereotypically have guessed, is just kind of install it and stop, and then not be responsive again. I don't think that's what's gonna happen. I'll have to see, though. Other comments or questions?
I would, I would add that there's been a lot of interest in that intersection at various different government levels. And I know our reps to the State House have been contacting DOT on their own and chasing that intersection down. To the extent that the DOT is now offering to come and talk to the council and answer questions and whatnot, so if you have particular interest in things, we're gonna try and set that up sometime in the, in the not-too-distant future, where they will actually come down and talk to us about our intersections, 101A and Continental, this intersection, obviously, and then up north as well. So it's an ongoing thing. I don't think they're gonna be able to ignore it.
No. And one of the things that I noticed very quickly after we first heard the application and approved it, the broken loop detector piece was almost, within days or weeks, straightened out. And at least that particular part of the thorn was removed pretty quickly, I thought. I don't know the exact timing, but it seemed like as quickly as I noticed it happening. Next time you went through the light, you sort of recognized that it was cycling differently. Other comments, questions?
Well, and like you say, my experience is that it's been improved over the last week or so. I mean, for a while, when they first installed it, it was a mess, especially in the morning. They focused a lot on the morning timing, and they seem to have straightened that out a lot. But I'm, I'm seeing a lot of the feedback that Tim's referring to, from people that are going through there at 5:30 at night and saying it's terrible. Today was a bad day anyway, because all over town, it was backed up.
Was there a turnpike problem or something?
There was an accident on the turnpike earlier this afternoon.
So, not just for our benefit, I mean, we're not, we're not responsible for the traffic in town, but as we look around and do our planning part, I recognize that nothing is gonna function appropriately when the turnpike jams. And, and we, as a town, do not wish to incur the cost, the physical size of the infrastructure it would take to function properly without the turnpike. In order to make DW Highway do what the turnpike does when the turnpike doesn't want to do it, you know, you'd have a six-lane road through town. And it's just not, never gonna happen. We wouldn't want it if we had the opportunity to get it. We shouldn't judge anything that happens on those days when there's a traffic accident on the turnpike, northbound or southbound. Anything else?
Nope.
That's a lot of planning and zoning administrators report. It's extraordinary for us. Casey, it's usually not that bad. Usually, it's, I don't have anything. Does anybody have, nope, we don't have anything either. Move on.
We've got the man here today.
The guy's in charge. He's in charge. All right, let's turn to item three on our agenda, which is Crosswoods Path 3 LLC as the applicant and DW Development LLC as the owner. Review for consideration of an amendment to a previously approved site, previously approved planned unit development. The parcel is located at 747 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial, Aqua Conservation, and Plandah Residential Development overlay districts. Tax map 7E Lot 4654, Case Planning Board 2019-30. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This particular application is new to you. It's related to item four, which you have seen conceptually, and at least initially, back in July, for a site plan for 21 multifamily units and 1,500 square feet of professional office. In the mech, in the process of getting that project to move forward, it's been the interpretation of our planning and zoning administrator that because this particular lot lies within the Crosswoods Path PUD, that in order for this to move forward under the auspices of that PUD approval, the PUD itself would need to be amended based on this new configuration, where this lot was originally supposed to be in one iteration, a restaurant, and in a second iteration, professional offices across the entire site. Given the difference of this opinion with previous planning and zoning administrators, there have been several changes that have happened on this site since the original PUD was approved back in the late 80s. So what we're kind of negotiated with the applicant and his attorney on is that we will do this through a narrative amendment, so we record a document with the registry of deeds, basically outlining the parameters of the PUD as amended with this particular project to move forward in the next agenda item. So at this point, I'll turn it over to the applicant and his attorney to kind of summarize how we're proposing to go through, doing that.
Thank you, Tim. Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. My name's Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer with Weiner Bennett in Nashua. We represent the applicant, Crosswoods Path 3 LLC. At the table with me is Chris Bova of Crosswoods Path 3 LLC. Also tonight in the audience is Richard Maynard, a professional engineer, Maynard Burkett, who's the engineer for the site plan on the case following this. And David Widmore is here, too. He's the property owner. So I'm just gonna discuss the first of the two cases, Mr. Chairman. The second case, of course, is the site plan application, significantly more detailed application and set of documents than what we filed as this narrative request to amend the PUD approval back in, it was actually back in January of 1999, when it first was approved. The board's pretty familiar, I think, with this property, certainly familiar with Crosswoods Path. Maybe I'll just take a couple minutes to refamiliarize the board, put on the record a little bit of data about the property, and then just summarize the application in this narrative form. The property is a vacant parcel, 747 Daniel Webster Highway on the easterly side, just north of the Crosswoods Path Boulevard. So it's right at the intersection of Crosswoods Path Boulevard and the, and DW Highway on the northerly side. On the other side of that same intersection is the 21-unit apartment building that was previously the office building and converted a few years ago, based on one of the site plan amendments that effectively went through to allow that, because that property also is part of the Crosswoods Path PUD. This property has about 2.5 acres, about 250 feet or more of frontage in on Daniel Webster Highway. It's actually a bit bigger than the property at one Crosswoods Path Boulevard, which is the office building converted into the 21 units. This property is serviceable by town water and sewer. It has a dramatic slope down from Daniel Webster Highway towards the Meramec River. As Tim mentioned, it's, of course, part of the PUD. There have been at least a couple commercial developments approved for the property, but never materialized. Frankly, as a standalone commercial site, this property's prospects have really languished over the 20-plus years that Crosswoods Path initial PUD approval was in place. On this property, Mr. Chairman, back in this past February, we applied for variance from the residential density requirements to allow this mixed-use multifamily residential and office building that had a residential density of 8.36 units per acre. That permitted the mix of single and two-bedroom units of 21 in total. Building, as also noted, would contain 1,500 square feet of office space, likely broken up into three, three segments. Property has sufficient onsite parking potential for the site as we would like to develop Mr. Price, in his staff report, a memorandum to you for tonight's meeting, noted that the 1,500 square feet of office space does satisfy the requirements of the PUD ordinance in terms of non-residential use and gross floor area to be contained within a PUD. So we're not here seeking relief from the commercial use requirement under the PUD ordinance. In effect, what we're seeking is an amendment of the PUD approval from 20 years ago to recognize that this is what's proposed for this site, rather than the previously proposed restaurant or commercial office, which I think was in several buildings, complex. In the past, as both Mr. Price in his report and as Tim mentioned tonight, there have been changes to the site plans before this, for Crosswoods Path over the years, but this process of amending the PUD approval has never been formally undertaken, even though there have been amendments to the site plans itself. Mr. Price determined that the PUD approval should, as a technical matter, be amended as a sort of prerequisite to doing the amendment to the site plan. So we talked to Tim and Robert about it, sort of figured out an approach that I think they thought was appropriate. We turned that into the narrative request for amendment that I filed, I believe it was about August 9th, that was submitted, and Matt brought us here this evening. Just a few comments on the amendment. So you should have it in your packets, I assume, Mr. Chairman. It's this letter form request, signed by both the applicant and Mr. Widmore, the property owner. And in it, we just simply get into the background of Crosswoods Path and this property, somewhat similarly to what I've already discussed. Noted that the various site plans have been approved, the two commercial ones never gener, never constructed, built out, property still being vacant. Note that Crosswoods Path has 131 residential units, currently significantly less than the maximum of 400 residential units that would be permitted in the zoning ordinance for Crosswoods Path. Noted how the, the existing PUD approval would need to be amended for this purpose based on Mr. Price's zoning interpretation. And in effect, all we're simply asking is that as probably somewhat of a pro forma approach, but certainly, we've recognized it's a necessary step, that the PUD approval be amended to allow this particular type of use, so that we can go forward and present to you in significant detail the site plan application. That's really where the guts of the development will be analyzed by you, submitted to you, follow through with the appropriate requirements that the site plan regulations impose, and you either fit, see fit to analyze that and make your judgment as to it. It would seem duplicative to go through that whole process now, when all we're trying to do is set forth a gate in this sort of, somewhat, I think, perfunctory and pro forma So a few more thoughts on what's being proposed. I think we've, we've said before, we certainly said this to the zoning board back in February, when they granted us the density variance, that this, that what we propose is, we think, quite compatible with what's already there. As you well know, the single-family portions of Crosswoods Path are further down the hill. There's common land, there's, there's common land that exists around the single-family components. There is the now-converted office building to apartments right at the top of the hill. We would be literally just opposite. We'd sort of frame the entrance, if you will, into Crosswoods Path with two very similar buildings on each side. The, there is, the multifamily condominium component of Crosswoods Path is just down the hill a little bit. I believe there's four buildings there. Mr. Bova's had a number of conversations with members of the homeowners association and the condominium association, has learned a lot from their, their much more unique and detailed knowledge of their home than we do, than we know. And he's tried to input into his project various comments and thoughts that they've had. The site plan details will show that in much more depth than I would summarize right The way this property can be developed also, I think, is lends itself to what we're approach, we're trying to approach. A single building rather than multiple buildings throughout kind of sets a more compact development. The board's probably, probably remembers that there's 150-foot wide PS&amp;H easement that goes through essentially the northerly quadrant, or really the northerly half almost of the property. Parking would be proposed to be under the, underneath there, as well as stormwater management. Of course, we have to work out those arrangements with PS&amp;H. But the building, of course, would be outside of that, sort of tucked into the somewhat southwest corner of the property, but reasonably isolated, close to DW Highway is logical, further away from the single-family residential component, allowing for some buffering, landscaping improvements and the like that the site plan can detail. In conclusion, Mr. Chairman, in his staff report, Mr. Price recommended that the board grant conditional final approval to this application to amend the Crosswoods Path PUD approval, with a condition precedent that within six months prior to plan signing, and presumably prior to document signing, we, the applicant, would revise or reformat the amendment narrative, put it into a recordable instrument, set it up for a planning board signature as well, and work with staff certainly to, to come up with an acceptable set of, set of sentences and paragraphs that duly note this amendment to the PUD of record. We agree with Mr. Price's recommendation. We accept the condition precedent certainly as well. We would respectfully request that the amendment be granted. Happy to answer questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Attorney Westgate, for the presentation and going through all of the details on that. For the board's benefit, I'm noting in the staff's memorandum that it isn't necessary for us to accept the application as complete. We could, we should have whatever dialogue we should have with the applicant about the amendment, open it up for a little public testimony, if there is any, and then we could make a decision about what to do with this amendment. With that in mind, does anyone have any questions of the applicant regarding this amendment to the PUD? Nelson?
Yes. First off, Brad, I think you answered this question, but I want to make it clear for the record that this in no way is affected by the PUD requirements of zoning. In other words, it, it completely conforms to the original zoning requirement for the PUD. That is the whole PUD with this amendment.
The, two thoughts, I guess. One is certainly in terms of the, the number of residential units permitted, it's, it obviously conforms.
Yes.
The site plan will have to conform with the requisite regulations for development details certainly as well. This, if the board chooses to approve this amendment tonight, it obviously has no bearing on whether, on what your decision may be vis a vis the site plan.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, I just wanted to be clear about that. And the other thing you mentioned slightly, and I had question on, and maybe it more applies to the site plan, is the, the PS&amp;H easement that's on the property. And if these are allowable uses in their easement, this parking shown, it doesn't quite reach the building, but it-
Correct.
Comes close and-
The building won't be in the easement. Parking and stormwater management will, and certainly some landscaping likely as well. And I think, and bottom line is, we're likely going to have to work out a joint use agreement with PS&amp;H to permit those improvements. That's fairly typical. The, the easement, as best I can tell, is at least 68 years old and maybe older. The easements in those days weren't as detailed as the PS&amp;H easements are today, but reserving a bit of judgment and some ability to interact with PS&amp;H. My guess is the joint use agreement approach is what we're gonna have to work out for those improvements. But the easement doesn't preclude those improvements, but it gives PS&amp;H some discretion on how you detail that and what they think, what you're going to do affects their easement rights, all that sort of thing, you know? I'm sure you're aware that, for example, PS&amp;H doesn't want to have, doesn't want a property owner to materially alter topography such that it changes significant elevation between ground elevation and, and power line height, for example, those kinds, that's the kind of thing they worry about, so.
Yeah.
But we know we have to work that through with them.
Okay, that will be necessary for any approval on the site plan itself, just see, as far as I'm concerned. You will probably agree.
Yeah, or, or depending what the board made it, a condition of approval before final approval, whatever approach the board may take.
Let me interrupt for a second, and just, I don't want to create sort of artificial divisions between the applications that make it harder to get the information out, but we are kind of heading over into some site plan questions, which is the next item on the agenda to address. Tim, did you want to-
I was just gonna reiterate the same thing that's more germane to the site plan, and just as, for example, since I was here the last time this lot was in front of the board, there's actually less impact under the ever-source easement here than there was in the previous application, which did have a joint use in principle-
They did have an agreement.
Yes.
Okay, I just didn't recall that. Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, right now.
Thank you, Nelson, for the questions. Other comments or questions, members of the board? Tom?
Yeah. I'd like to better understand some of the history, I guess, behind the PUD and the concept of the PUD, and where we're ending up with in regard to this. I know when we allowed the transfer of the building across the street from commercial to residential, it struck me as, as almost a complete violation of the idea or the concept of the PUD that was originally brought forward, because now you didn't have any commercial. And you're talking about building three units at 1,500 square feet, which is not very large, into this building to, to satisfy a commercial element, but is it really satisfying the concept of the PUD that was originally thought or brought forward versus just plain bringing a residential development forward in the, in the original space? I mean, I guess, maybe I should let you answer, but I, I'm just baffled by the whole process that we've been going through here, where we incrementally just piece away at it until all we have left effectively is a residential development.
Well, a few thoughts, I guess. Talked before, the, just as a technical point, and the commercial component that we have has been determined by staff to be sufficient to meet the commercial requirements of the PUD ordinance. So, again, as I mentioned, we're not seeking relief from, from the elements of the PUD ordinance that call for a commercial component. There's, I know it's, in the grand scheme of things, it sounds minimal. I agree with that. It's, it's not a significant amount, but it is a sufficient amount as per the regulations. I think that the only way to look at the PUD- I think that the only way to look at the PUD, Crosswoods Path being one of them or perhaps others, is just to see how it's played itself out over the 20 years since approval. It had really two commercial components to it, I suppose, the office building on the one and the restaurant or professional offices. It was a daycare component, I think, to this lot's prior commercial approval that never got implemented as well. I just think that, over time, perhaps it was the location of this PUD, perhaps it was its design, perhaps its functions, factors in the economy that over 20 years have played out, perhaps it's the nature of development or a lack thereof in terms of infrastructure utility-wise that's on this part of Daniel Webster Highway. But 20 years ago, looking into the future, just didn't play itself out in reality. And you're kind of left with the circumstance, do you deny reality and simply believe that because 20 years ago we thought this type of development would occur, but it hasn't, and it hasn't just been a few years, it's been two decades, that the property then continues to languish and not become viable? I'm not ascribing pluses or minuses to the actions of 20 years ago, I'm just sort of, we're just reacting to the reality of what happened, frankly. And I don't know if much more proof is necessary to show that this property will languish if it has to be fully developed for commercial use. Frankly, its topography, its location with the PS&amp;H easement over it, it's got, it's zoned, there are three zoning lines that run through it. I guess maybe crystal balls 20 years ago might have predicted it, but I don't think I would have predicted it either. That's the only way I've analyzed this. And it's kind of what we said at the zoning board too, in similar words. So, I don't know. I thought about it a little more today even, and I'll stop talking, but I was almost thinking that maybe a PUD that had a sort of commercial core as opposed to a commercial fringe would have had a better chance, if you will. But here, the commercial piece is on the top entrance, and the residential is all laid out below. So, if you had a different topography, a different layout, a commercial piece that had more surrounding of residential and common land, maybe that would have hit the flavor more. But in a way, this design almost started out fatally flawed, perhaps. Again, not by anyone's fault, but just by what time showed. Too much philosophy. But it was a philosophical question, we do have to
It was, and I understand that technically it meets the minimal requirements. It doesn't meet the anticipated or the presented requirements when it was first brought forward, at least from my understanding. It's changed dramatically in its commercial flavor and gone to effectively 100% or 99% residential, along with the multifamily or single-family homes in the back and things like that. It's all one large residential, except for 1,500 square feet, which is a very small amount of space for commercial.
Which, if you read the way our ordinance is written, is kind of what you result with a PUD. It's different than a mixed-use conditional use permit, like we've done with Flatley and Edgbrook. There's a completely different set of expectations and requirements there. But in terms of the way this PUD ordinance is written, however long ago it was written, it anticipates being almost entirely residential.
And I wouldn't argue that it meets the requirements. I agree to that. It doesn't meet the intent from my understanding or expectation based on what was originally presented. And there was a reason somebody went with the PUD ordinance route in the first place. And I'm just trying to understand it. But as you pointed out carefully, that was 20 years ago. And I have a hard time holding somebody to an easement after 20 years personally, just because you don't know what's going to happen 20 years from now. But I look back and I get a lot of feedback from people about the amount of residences that we have in town right now, or we have being built, or we have coming. Now you want to add another 21. It's just piling onto an issue that many people in town believe is a problem. And I'm just trying to understand if that's in fact the best way to go, given the MAAR, the airport access road that's gone in since this was originally planned, and is there in fact going to be some changes in the way commercial is going to develop in that area? It hasn't occurred yet, maybe just because we haven't been very friendly on it, I don't know, but I suspect
I have some thoughts on that. Two things. One, lack of sewer beyond this particular property. And B, the narrowness of lots between the DW Highway and the Turnpike and DW and the River. There just isn't significant size to those lots, and the lack of sewer has really basically kept development from happening in that area. And that's not going to get fixed anytime soon.
Not without a huge injection of cash, correct.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the only two cents that I would add to the discussion is, the way this project's developed, and there's been some need for the applicant to come back and get some relief from some requirements about promises that were made 20 years ago, and taking a look at other examples of PUDs and to some extent the CUPs across town. I think it provides us with some level, some body of evidence to sit back and take a look at whether this concept is a viable one commercially for property developers to come up with. And I can't blame a property developer for coming up with something that seemed to satisfy what our ordinance asked them to do. But I think that the market for trying to combine some commercial and some residential, and, you know, you get some really odd configurations. I saw one in the paper in Concord today, and maybe it's one that they're fortunate enough to have found all the tenants for already, but you're looking at the combination, and it's very familiar to some of the things we've seen with some residential and assisted living and three restaurants and a bank. And like, there's not three 8,000-square-foot restaurants that are going to come put down. I mean, 8,000-foot restaurants are the largest of the large sort of TGI Fridays, you know, the bigger national chains, and there aren't that many in the market. And finding banks and finding assisted living providers, I hope they succeed in Concord, but some questions about whether this idea is something that's sort of forced out there by our regulations or some of the ambitions that we had thought, when we envisioned things, that just isn't consistent with what anything really develops in the market. I think if you look at even our conditional use permit, you look at the outlet mall and how it's developed, and now it's phase two, and it's sort of, in my mind, really does meet the spirit and intent of the CUP, but then our other CUPs always feel kind of forced. And like a square peg in a round hole, and then they come back and they ask for some relief because they say it's a square peg in a round hole. And I think as a planning board, we ought to think about that as we develop our next round of master plan and figure out what we're going to do. I think the DW corridor is going to continue to get redeveloped, and it'll get into some more compact development, which might have some small-scale combinations of commercial and residential. But doing the many-acre, whole bunch of apartment buildings and three retail stores out front, so far, nobody's managed to make that recipe succeed anywhere in a town that I can think of. I don't know if you can think of an example where it's been done and actually did perform to the way it was supposed to perform.
Well, that's two different questions. But the one that comes to mind, of course, is the London Court Commons area, which is still viable and has hung in there, although it's marginal on the commercial side. I think at the time, I'm rereading the ordinance tonight because I want to be sure that this did meet it as far as, that we weren't interfering with the ordinance, and we haven't as far as I can tell. It occurs to me that what we, that what, the way the ordinance is written, we've got a maximum amount of commercial allowed for the
That's the issue with the ordinance right there.
For the residential. And at the time, the fear was the whole town's going commercial, going to create all kinds of traffic problems, let's put some housing in with it, make them build some housing. So, that's why it got limited the way it is, the way Tim pointed out. And so, maybe it is time to rethink this in the direction it went, if that's the way we want to go. But that's the way the ordinance was written, and it was at least 20 years ago.
I think we've learned a few things on some other projects about the tax impact as well, where there was this impression that the tax impact required the commercial in order to make the project benefit the town, and it isn't the case. And actually, the residential is more tax-positive components of all of these than the commercial part is.
That was another factor that drove this thinking that I was just talking about, yes.
The school kids factor, and I just handed Tim publication that reiterated some of the data we've seen from applicants, that the number of kids that are coming in developments statistically is well-studied, well-understood, and it doesn't produce a significant number of kids from most of the residential developments that are multifamily, one either studio or one or two-bedroom apartments. And so, three of the major underlying concepts behind PUDs and CUPs, tax base, whether we favor commercial versus residential, and the impact on the schools, are bearing out to not support the idea in the direction that we originally thought it would
That's right.
As we approached that. So, anyway, all of that is a fantastic philosophical discussion when we sit down with our seat, with our master plan effort next time around. This applicant, obviously, has got a particular question before us, which is amending their PUD. And really what they're doing with this amendment is doing a bit of housekeeping for the fact that their PUD has already been amended a bunch of times without ever actually having a vote. And so, it's kind of cleaning up some old history with that. Other comments or questions with the applicant? And if not, we'll open it up and see if there's any public comment to have, and then consider what other final steps, questions? Are there any butters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And then, for board members, if the discussion is exhausted, it's appropriate for the board to consider some motion or action on this agenda item.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we grant the amendment to the PUD as outlined by attorney, the things, how he's going to change it and how it's going to still just stay within the PUD, but that they'll do a narrative which will eventually be corrected, and I think that should go ahead.
Per Robert's memo.
Oh, yes, as Robert's memo do, yes.
Excellent.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? That's 400 to grant the amendment to the PUD. I almost said CUP. PUD.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Item four on our agenda is the same parties, Crosswoods Path 3 LLC as the applicant and DW Development LLC as the owner. Continued review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan to construct 21 multifamily residential and three office units. The parcels located at 747 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial Aquifer Conservation and Planned Residential Development Overlay Districts. Tax map 7E, Lot 46-54, Case Number Planning Board 2019-23. It is continued from our July 16th, August 20th, and September 17th planning board meetings. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant on this piece?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I think we've got a pretty good idea what we're talking about, since we spent a fair amount of time talking about it in the previous application. This was before the board, without actually opening the public hearing back in July. If the board recalls at that meeting, the board took a formal vote and allowed this application to continue under our former regulations that appeared in our subdivision regs. So, this is continuing to be reviewed under those old previous regulations. We did receive peer review comments a couple of days back. We still have a fair number of engineering peer review comments that do need to be addressed, as well as the, in the redesign, the applicant is indicating a retaining wall in the front setback to DW Highway, which, based on the interpretation of our planning and zoning administrator, because it requires structural engineering plans, it's a structure, therefore needs to meet the setback requirements. So, that would require either an additional trip to the ZBA for the setback for that or a redesign of that part of the site to eliminate the need for the retaining wall. Based on the number of comments that are still out there, I think it makes sense for the board to go ahead, listen to the initial application presentation, since we haven't had that yet, and given that the board just granted conditional approval to the amendment to the PUD, that we accept the application as complete and start the 65-day clock and then continue out to the meeting in December to allow the applicant to continue to address the review comments at this stage.
Thank you, Tim. All right, when you are ready, please introduce yourself and then tell us about the project.
For the record, my name is Richard Maynard, a professional engineer with Maynard Park and Engineering of Nashua, representing Chris Bowler and Passports, I mean, Crossroads Path LLC and the property owner, David Whittmore. Attorney Westgate pretty much described the property. We have the power line diagonally through the back part of the property, which kind of restricts development. And for what's being proposed, there's only going to be a parking lot in there and a portion of a stormwater management basin, which is officially going to be a retention recharge basin. The soils in this area are coarse and medium-to-coarse sandy soils, are very rapid perking. They have a perk rate, for those who know, more rapid than five minutes per inch. It's an ideal use for this. It'll contain all the storms, except some major storms, which they'll, such as a 25-year or 50-year storm, which is way beyond any stormwater management thing. And in that case, it would overflow to the back right corner of the property. Mr. Disco mentioned something about PS&amp;H. We've had discussions with PS&amp;H. We, originally, they have several concerns, which we've worked out with them. They have a few minor ones left. Their primary concern now has to do with separation of, the vertical separation of the lines with the ground. Before, we had some, because this is a steeply sloping lot, it's a rough lot, topo-wise, we had some cuts and fills on the order of eight feet, which they didn't like, they were nervous about them. So, I think we've got all the cuts and fills down to a minimal of about two feet or less. They're still wanting to look at that, but they're okay there. The other thing is, they had concerns about our tree planting, although not in the easement, they're concerned they're too close, that 20 years from now, they'll be cutting branches and things. We'll work those out, but we're close to addressing the review comments from the PS&amp;H people. As Attorney Westgate says, there was an old joint use agreement here. There may be another joint use agreement here. PS&amp;H doesn't have all the rights in the world, but they have the right to enjoy their line, and we have to still meet the requirements in the laws with regard to separation of power lines to the ground. They don't like snow storage in their easement, so I'll have to take those notes off of there. They're afraid that we'll get these big tall piles, machines on top of kids up there screwing around, so we'll move the snow storage areas around and take care of that. My client is trying to help me make my presentation. The last item of particular concern we can address tonight is the eight-foot retaining wall in the setback to Daniel Webster Highway. Until recently, we weren't aware of that interpretation about walls and tall walls, I'll call them tall walls in the setback. So, in this particular case, we called for an eight-foot wall. However, we don't, we can redesign the site along that side of the building, essentially to the left of the DW Highway side of the thing, to either most likely eliminate that section of driveway. We don't necessarily need driveways all around this building, there's more than adequate access to the rear of the property with the driveway on the right side. So, that's one idea. I haven't worked it all out yet, but that's one idea we're working with. And the other thing is, if there's a wall, it might be at the building and not, and not over at Daniel Webster Highway. But in any regard, that's entirely workable, so we won't need, we're not going for variance, we won't need it. We'll have the site redesigned to eliminate that particular concern. We have 66 parking spaces proposed here. If you do the calculation, and I believe we only need 54, so if we had to lose a few parking spaces along DW Highway, we can work that out, or we can put them elsewhere on the site. Most of the other items are all questions and concerns and wanting for more information on the things we propose. They want to see a light standard detail, they want a little bit more on the lighting. Now, on the lighting, we were asked, there was some question about spillover on the lighting. If you look at the lighting plan, folks, I don't know if you have a lighting plan, but
Yeah, we do.
Page five.
On drawing number five, On drawing, drawing number five, along Crosswoods Path Boulevard, we were asked to improve the lighting for the Boulevard itself, and that's why you see some of those, those two or three light standards spilling off into, into the driveway. The light standards will be located on our property, but they will improve the lighting of the, this section of Cross, Crosswoods Path Boulevard, so that's the request of our, I guess it's either the condo association or the homeowners association.
Homeowners Association.
Home, which we will implement. And my client must, my client must have just had correspondence or a discussion, the one immediately at the intersection will be gone, so we'll just have the one towards the right that'll light that section of Boulevard. All the other lighting will, will light the parking lot and will, will not spill over into adjoining properties.
Just, a note on that, if these lights do remain on the property, that will require waivers from the planning board for the spillover into the, off of the property.
To the what property?
The levels that are spilling off of the property would be violating the regulations, so if it, if they...
Even if it's on the Boulevard itself?
If they're moved into the Boulevard and off of your property, that's a different story, but as they are shown today, on the property, they require waivers if you were to leave them where they are today.
Jeez, we had it in the Boulevard before, and we moved them back on ours, so you're telling me to put them back in the Boulevard?
A waiver is not that complicated.
No, I don't understand that.
A waiver is easy, yeah. We give the waiver.
And it's interesting that you've got light stand poles and trees, and I was, when I looked at it, I thought, are they going to put the lights on the side, fixed to the side of the tree? I mean, you've got your new light pole on sheet three, and one, and then the tree on, I think it's sheet four, yeah, sheet four. They're almost identically positioned, and I, I had an interest...
I understand, Mr. Nelson, we, we have to coordinate those two.
Ah, thank you.
And that was one of the peer review comments.
Oh, was it? Oh.
They, they said it's, it's okay, but not, not good. So, there should be a little bit more separation between the trees and the light standards.
I thought you were just going to screw the lights, things onto the tree.
Unfortunately, my engineer didn't superimpose the two drawings.
All right, okay.
Well, we'll take care of that, and that's in the peer review comments.
All right, okay.
To take care of, so. At this point, I'm not sure what else I can tell you about this plan that's of any consequence. The peer review things and the staff review things, a lot of them will be, but they're all essentially asking for clarification, more information. There doesn't seem to be any particular objections to what we've shown on the plan, other than what we just went through, so.
So, as we were just talking about lighting, let me point out, as I look at sheet four...
Yeah.
There are lights around the back of your parking lot that don't appear on the other sheets or on your lighting plan.
Sheet, drawing four?
Sheet, on sheet four, there's three lights along the back, and one light along the eastern edge of the parking lot, that don't appear on your other sheets, and they don't appear on your lighting plan.
They're not really, it's, it's not really supposed to be any lights on that landscape plan, but anyway.
Well, the other lights, most of them are there, three of the ones that you talked about for the Boulevard are also on the landscape plan, and then one of them is missing.
If I may, regarding the lighting, the initial review that I did on this project when it was submitted back in July, there were no labels on the lights that were indicated to be proposed within the Crosswoods Path Boulevard, so my comment at that point was, the lighting for your site needs to be on your site. They now show the lighting on the site with the trespass, and in having a conversation with Chris the other day, he informed me of the request from the association to have those streetlights. My recommendation is, rather than having them on Mr. Bova's property and need a waiver to spill over onto the property, that if that's the wish of the association, and Mr. Bova is accommodating that, that they show those as off-site improvements and streetlights labeled as streetlights, so that we don't have to even get into the issue of light trespass, because the streetlights are treated differently than parking lot and on-site lighting.
I think they'll also light the street better if you put them near the street.
No, I agree with what Mr. Thompson just said, okay, glad he clarified that.
Okay.
You know, from time to time, we have to satisfy our homeowners association, condo, as well as this board and the regs.
Well, we'll, we'll have a, a public hearing in a little bit, where some of the butters, I'm sure, will have something to say, but I do want to applaud you for the effort to go and speak with the neighbors and try to figure out ways to make these things get, make all these accommodations.
That's my client, trying to be an excellent neighbor.
Thank you for that. I, I honestly appreciate it. It's something that I have tried to impress on applicants all over the place, and I guess we'll hear in a little bit how well you accomplished it when we get, give them a chance to talk. But I, just for the effort of going out and trying to do it, I want to make sure that we acknowledge that for you, because it's not easy to do sometimes. Is there anything more of the presentation that you'd like to make?
No, that's, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. All right, so, planning board, the recommendation to staff is that we determine this application is complete, containing enough information for a review, and then take some other further steps beyond that, but the first question is whether this application is complete.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we consider this application is complete and gives, enables us to do consideration of whatever they want to do.
Is there a second for Alister's motion?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Four zero zero to determine the application is complete. Now, we've got some plan cleanups, we've got some waivers, and some things to discuss, some potential things to discuss, the sidewalk and some other things. Are you prepared to...
Yes, I forgot to say, but we're going to, I forgot to present that. Yes, we're going to ask for a sidewalk waiver unless somebody tells us differently, because there are no sidewalks in this area that we can see, and for whatever it's worth, the previous plans had sidewalks waived.
There is, there is, I went and studied the site on, yesterday, there is a sidewalk running from the first of the multifamily units, other than the one, big one at the front. There is a sidewalk all the way down, and sidewalks all around the rest of the site. All right, only on one side, but I would have thought if, unless you really want to put sidewalks on both sides, and I can't see the point of doing it at that point where you are. I would have thought you made a suitable, I don't know, sidewalk within your site and a, and a nice sort of zebra, sorry, you don't call them zebra, pedestrian crossings, so that they enabled, if they want to leave your site, they walk across the ninety degrees across the Boulevard, and then they're on sidewalks. I'm not too sure why you need any more sidewalks needed. I actually went and checked where the sidewalks were, and there, there is sidewalks pretty well everywhere, and even the new converted thing at the, thing at the front has got a fair amount of pedestrian-controlled ways. They've got fencing so that they, people can't be hit by cars, so I'm not sure why you need much more in the way of sidewalks on the site apart from in your area, but I'm bound, I'm happy to be overruled.
So, I think ultimately, if we, if the applicant doesn't get a waiver, then the requirement for sidewalks would be along DW and along Crosswoods Path.
Ah, yeah.
Under the previous regulations, you're correct, yes, which is what we're reviewing here.
There isn't, there isn't any.
And so, there would be some basis for the applicant to ask for a waiver, or a partial waiver of that, and of course, they want a complete waiver, they can ask for it, and a partial waiver to build a bit of sidewalk to get, get across the street and link up with the others. The challenge with doing a little bit of sidewalk and linking up with Crosswoods Path is that crosswalk across Crosswoods Path Boulevard would be an off-site improvement that Crosswoods Path would have to support, since it's their property. The applicant doesn't completely control that.
Thank you for correcting me, sir.
Well, it doesn't mean it's not a good idea, but, or, I don't know what, what the folks who live there would think about whether it's useful to them or helpful or not. Maybe it isn't, but ultimately, it's not completely within this applicant's control to decide to do a crosswalk on Crosswoods Path Boulevard. Tim, you look like you...
No.
Yep. Okay. You mentioned that you are going to ask for a sidewalk, you mean, are you asking for that tonight, or the next time we meet?
No, I have, I have to put a letter together with justifications and things like that, and I like the, the crosswalk idea, for sure. We got to make sure that our association's okay with that.
Of course, you must.
There's no justification for sidewalks whatsoever, DW Highway, that's, everybody can see that, and we'll have to explain better why we want to, in Crosswoods Path Boulevard itself, why we don't want, so. There's three things here, we're going to talk about in a waiver letter that we, needs to be submitted.
So, excellent, I look forward to seeing the waiver letter. I agree with you that, and I kind of mentioned this in discussion of the project when I first saw it, is leading traffic from, pedestrian traffic from the larger development past your parcel up to DW Highway, doesn't make a whole lot of sense, because there's no more sidewalks up there, and there's nowhere to really get to. Once you get there, there's no sort of retail establishments that are nearby, even the Seven-Eleven's kind of a little ways away. So, I wouldn't be looking for you to try to propose those kinds of sidewalks, I think a waiver for that would be pretty easy to argue for. Pay attention to the statutory basis for granting waivers, they're in the staff's memo. You'd have those? No?
They are not in the, this memo, they might have been in my first memo.
I didn't see any, Tim.
Yeah, I don't think I did, because at that point, they hadn't actually requested them.
They are under six seventy-four.
I'll, I'll, yeah. I'll discuss it with Tim before he finalizes the waiver letter anyways.
The waiver letter for sidewalks is the identical process you would use if you wanted a light waiver, based on the location and the spillover, or if you choose to work with the Crosswoods Path folks to put the lights on the edge of Crosswoods Path Boulevard on their property, then you would not need that, but if ultimately you do need that, same process, same letter, same statutory criteria, to make it make sense. Are there any other waivers that are anticipated, Tim?
Not at this stage, no.
I was glad to hear some of your discussion and suggestion about engineering solutions to the retaining wall. As I went by the site there now, it's actually relatively level at Daniel Webster Highway, and I was kind of surprised to see a ten-foot deep excavation to align those parking spaces. I didn't know what that was for, but if you're going to engineer that out of there, hopefully that'll not be a concern.
If you would, I'll explain that, because we have, in the back of the building is the basement floor, and the front of the building is the first floor, there's a ten-foot differential in, in elevation, plus we have to get the grades down to get to the stormwater management plant, so we end up a decent drop of grades to the back left corner of the parking lot, or the back left corner of the building, which makes it eight to ten feet or more below the, below the highway itself, so it's, it's not a flat site, it's a, it's a sloping site, so.
It is, but right at the road where there are parking spaces, where that eight-foot wall is going to be right now, it's level in that spot.
But...
And you're going to cut to make it eight foot deep.
It's deceptive, when, when you, when you drop a building from front to back like this.
You also mentioned in your discussion that you might consider driveways that don't completely surround the building, so you don't have a road by Daniel Webster Highway. Yeah, deal with the fire department on that, they're probably going to object to that plan, they like to have access completely around all the buildings.
They will have access to all the building, just not with a piece of equipment, not with a truck.
Generally the kind of access they're looking for.
Wow. I hope it's fine.
Can I, can I, can I make a comment on that?
I mean, you don't have to resolve it with us, because we are not the fire department, whatever they're happy with, if they're happy, we're happy.
I hear you, I understand that, too, but I hope they're not much different than fire departments in other towns.
I spoke with the fire department, I spoke with them, that's not going to be there, I promise you.
The road, as long as they're happy?
That driveway's not going to be there.
As long as the fire department's happy.
That falls within fifty feet of Daniel Webster Highway. They're not going to put a piece of apparatus there on a three-story building where it's in the fall protection.
The, the, building fall protection to, to a fire truck, there's supposed to be a certain distance away from the building itself, so they're not supposed to have a piece of equipment on that road, on that driveway, by fire code, their own code requirements, and I forget what it is, but...
Don't, don't have to convince us, as long as they say that they're happy.
That is one of their rules, that a piece of fire equipment is fifty feet away from the, the building on fire itself.
Well, that's not what they've required on any other development.
Well, that's, that's their own, and, and it's not unique to Merrimack, it's in every town, has that in their guidelines, oh, yeah.
Speak to them, as long as they're happy.
We will.
They'll be happy. I suspect that you may have some pushback on some of those items, but if not, good for you, I think that's awesome.
Just trying to educate the board a little bit.
I don't have any other comments, other than hoping to, you know, in the future, see the plans with all of the details in them, that are the subject of comments, or subject of needs to have things cleaned up in them. Do other members of the boards have comment, other member of the board have comments on the site plan?
No, just, not for me.
Yeah.
I think we need to see the final proper plan, and we might have a few minor ones, but otherwise, no.
So, Daniel Webster Highway is sloping downward, hang on one second, wait, I thought of one first.
What?
Daniel Webster Highway is sloping downward to the north as it goes across there, but it's also crowned side to side. If you put a eight or ten-foot drop on the edge of your property by Daniel Webster Highway, you're going to collect all the stormwater from Daniel Webster Highway. Are you prepared for that, and is that part of your calculation for managing that stormwater?
Yes.
And make sure that our peer reviewers are tuned in to looking and making sure that'll work. Nelson?
Okay, yeah, I had two other comments. One had to do with the detention basin overflow. I want to know where that water is going.
Into the open area on our own property.
Well, and then, yeah.
We're talking about fifty or hundred-year storms, Nelson.
Yeah.
Not, not little, we're talking flooding, and no matter what the stormwater management is directed to that area and then, and beyond, on the plan to the far corner, we have several, over an acre of open land beyond there for it to surf, flow onto the surface and dissipate into, into the ground, but...
Well, I, I hope our engineering...
And nobody's going to notice it, because it's, we're having a fifty or a hundred-year storm event, which is already creating enough, uh, surface drainage without our, whether our, our retention basin is there or not.
I'm not sure about that, I think that what you'll notice from statistics is that we've gotten three or four hundred-year floods in the last ten years.
Yeah.
Not quite, but yes, we've had greater than a hundred, for sure.
Yeah.
More than you're supposed to.
We've had at least two in the last ten years, over a hundred-year floods.
I believe our regulation is based on you're having to calculate that you won't have any runoff from your property that's created or enhanced by your development for a hundred-year storm, isn't it, the hundred-year?
No, it doesn't go that high. It's usually ten or twenty-five, yes.
I thought it went to fifty.
I'd have to double-check what it is in the old regs, I don't have those in front of me, I have the new regs in front of me.
Whatever it is, our peer reviewers expert at sorting that out.
Yeah, I just want to bring it to attention.
There has been peer review of the drainage, there are things that will be clarified through that process.
Okay, good.
Excellent.
The, one of the question I had was, is DOT involved in this? There's no entrance onto DW, other than Crosswoods.
One of my comments is, is that yes, we need verification that either A, DOT does not need to amend the permit, or DOT needs to amend the permit, because this is the accessing, the only way for this site to get out is via Crosswoods Path to DW Highway, so.
Okay, that's in the...
We did require that of the previous application on this site, I would expect the same for this.
Yeah, we initiated some inquiries to that effect, they haven't responded back to us.
Okay.
So, we may have to push a little to get an answer, I don't know, they don't seem to be...
Are some of the driveway improvements within the right of way for DW?
I don't believe there are, but the influx of this traffic to DW, I think, is the impetus, that at least we want them to verify that they don't need us to update the permit.
Yeah, I think they'll probably have good luck getting that satisfied. I couldn't tell whether some of this outer driveway, which may go away, is within the right-of-way for DW.
No, no.
Yes, you mean the existing driveway that's there?
No, no, the one that we talked about, that wraps around your building.
It's in their property, that's all on their property.
And their property can still be within the right-of-way of DW Highway?
Uh, I think the red, I think the property line is the end of DW Highway's property line. I think that's a joint property line between this owner and the DW Highway.
Could be.
Should be.
On good, on fair amount of DW Highway, there's also easements that run along the, that are burdening the private property owners along DW Highway?
Uh, could be, could be.
And I don't know whether there is one here.
I'm not aware, but my attorney over here will check that.
And perhaps already has, since this has been thought about quite a bit.
I thought you didn't have enough to do for it.
Yeah. Other comments or questions by members of the board? All right, let's open it up and have a chance for the public to offer us some comments on things. And if we have a handful of folks that want to speak, I'd ask you to give up the table and let them enjoy it. Who's first? Yes, please, come on. Yes, please, come on. When you sit down, take a moment to get settled in and sign in on the clipboard, and then when you're ready, tell us what's on your mind. I can. Pull it closer and. Touch the on button just to make sure it turns really bright green.
Thank you. Oh, okay. That sounds better. I know I have a soft voice, but.
Don't forget to introduce yourself first.
So my name is Linda Feldison and probably many of you have already seen me here before in this chair. I'm, I live on Crosswoods Path Boulevard and I'm one of the board members for the Crosswoods Path Homeowners Association. And as has been said already this evening, we have been actually working very closely with Mr. Bova around this whole plan because we had quite a few comments when he came previously to this board. But a few things have come up since that I just want to be a little clear about or just be a clearer about. And to be quite honest, you could advise me because I'm not sure if I'm supposed to bring these up now or later in the process. So I do apologize if I'm not, if I'm not doing things in the right order.
Pretty good chance this is the time.
This is the time? Okay, good. So I just wanna say, just based on, it's already been said, that we did actually make a strong request for those lights on Crosswoods Path Boulevard and I really want to see them there somewhere because it is now more of a matter of safety as you come around the bend with the extra traffic and maybe cars coming out, so people will have to brake, so I don't know that we have a strong feeling as to where they should be on which property they should be. But I think that the, the expense would be paid for by the, not by Crosswoods Path community for that, for that lighting as part of. And the retaining wall that we heard about tonight, I just wanna be clear, that, that's gonna be up the Daniel Webster Highway end, not down near the families, right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. It's just that we've had a lot of problems with retaining walls in our community falling down and. I didn't, I didn't wanna have to deal with another retaining wall falling onto people's properties, so. And I know about the storm and the hundred-year storm or whatever, and I know that plans have been put in place to have the retaining basins for the runoff, water runoff. But when you said the runoff would be on the right-hand side of the property, is that runoff, would that come potentially into people's houses below?
So we'll do two things. Let's get you a plan that you can look at so you can see what we're talking about. And then the other is, one of the design parameters that they would have to do is make sure that it doesn't leave their property in any way enhanced by the development. In other words, if there's already water running across their property today, they don't have to stop that.
The rate of runoff post-development has to be the same or less than it was before the development happens.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because there is something in the covenants about lot grades shall not be substantially changed in a way as to divert the natural flow of water onto adjoining, adjoining lots, open space, roadways, and common drainage systems, which I know your plans have taken that into account, so.
In principle, that's virtually the same thing our regulation says. We use different words, but almost the exact same requirement.
That's probably where they got it from in the first place. So, so that, that set aside, that was just some new information that came out tonight. So I think the biggest concern is still the traffic light, the traffic congestion that is gonna be coming out of the complex. And I know that we, we're definitely not gonna get a traffic light. I did speak to the state about that. You're saying, thank goodness. I know there's pros and cons for, for both of it, so. I had to ask because so many people had asked me about it. One of the things I wondered if we could do, and I'm not sure if it's because it's our property, could we just put some markings at the end that says it's only one lane? Because some people now think there's two, they can go in two lanes to turn left and turn right. We don't have any markings there. I don't know.
It's a private road. The town doesn't.
So if it's a private road, we could consider doing that?
We can, yes, we will. We can negotiate that, yes, separately.
Just because it might, that's just something I've thought of. It might make it easier for people. So I think the other, my other concerns are really just during construction. We'd like, and this, these comments are not necessarily for me. They're from other people who've already asked me about this situation. We'd like some adequate signage or something during constructions that guides people down Crosswoods Path Boulevard so that they don't run into equipment that might be there or, I don't know what's gonna happen, but this is probably something that comes later on. I'm not really sure, but just from a safety aspect, because there's only really two lanes and if you're blocking one lane, I'm not saying you're going to, but should you, you know, it will be too lots of cars trying to get down one lane coming down the road. Somebody did ask me about that. And the other thing that I think has been a real concern is the deterioration of the road because we've got a lot more traffic gonna be on it, particularly during the construction period. And I know this, this is something new for Chris, so he's probably not excited to see me here tonight about this, but one of the things I was, I did show him before, if any damage is done to the roads during the construction, I would like to see that it's repaired and paid for by the, by essentially Chris, the developer. And one of the things I was thinking of is that if you're gonna come in and pave all of your roads, which I'm assuming you are, and they're not gonna be dirt roads with a little piece of the gravel, maybe it's just easier to just repave after you've finished all the construction, just repave that top of the street as well. But that road's already twenty years old, so maybe it's not a lot more, maybe it's just easier to just repave that bit because there's only a little bit there really, right? Rather than trying to just make repairs.
However, that plays out, yeah.
Speak for everybody in the community and.
We have sympathy for you. However that plays out, though, it's gonna be a private matter between the condominium association or the homeowners association and the developer. It isn't something we can make them do because.
Because it's a private road.
It's not a town road. I could say that.
Do I have to go like this, do I? No, no, I'm not.
We can certainly say from experience that this, this amount of construction doesn't typically create extraordinarily heavy impacts on roadways that are nearby. Sometimes a little bit of the exit point from the pavement off onto the site can get a little worn down and that ends up getting picked up when they repave theirs, but we haven't had a situation that I'm aware of that the, the main body of the road has been significantly impacted even by some of the really big, big developments that we've seen around town. I don't know if other people have different observation or different memory, but pavement's actually pretty tough stuff, I guess.
And the last thing I'd like to say is that there was a reference to an excellent neighbor earlier on. And so far, Chris has been very cooperative with the things that we've brought up at previous meetings and having separate meetings with us all the way along. I think we're gonna meet about the lighting and things like that, so. It's nice to see somebody coming in and working with us to try to make it a really nice community for everybody.
Well, the same compliments that I offered him earlier, I extend to you as well because it takes two. He can't meet by himself. And you guys have come forward and been willing to work cooperatively towards a productive end as well, and thank you for doing that. Sometimes applicants, sometimes abutting parties are simply opposed to a project and they're not willing to have the discussion and there isn't anything that would satisfy some of their concerns. And then you really end up at loggerheads and then the board's gotta make a decision on what to do with an application, but it's so much easier for us when the parties can get together and figure out what are the real core issues and how can we tackle them. Thank you.
Well, something's gonna be built and at least I think, in my personal opinion, this has nothing to do with being a board member, I'd rather see an apartment on one side that looks like an apartment on the other side. Aesthetically, I think it will look a lot better and probably better than that land looks right now, but.
Yes.
So, the only, the only other comment I have on the sidewalks is that, the only place where we don't have a sidewalk, and it's only because I go up to Jean's Auto all the time and I walk up there, is once we get past the entrance into both the existing apartment and the condos, that little piece up to Daniel Webster Highway is the only place we don't have a sidewalk. And I certainly don't think we need a sidewalk on the side of the new apartments because where's it gonna go to? It's just gonna come down into our common area that we have there, and I'm not even sure who would even use it.
If they were putting it on their property, which would be part of what would normally be their approach, since that's the part they control, I think what Alistair was suggesting is at some point, there's a crosswalk that leads them across the way to the rest of your sidewalk system. So somebody would just cross the road, cross, crossover, Crosswoods Path right there.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interpret what I think the lady is saying is because the sidewalk that is there now stops at the first residential building as you come in, I think she was suggesting it might be nice if that sidewalk was continued right up to DW Highway. Did I read you right?
Well, that's the only place we don't have a sidewalk, but you know, how many people use it? I don't know. I just walk through Chris's grass.
That's for something, again.
Walk through the grass to get to Daniel Webster Highway. It's not very good when the snow's all piled up.
That would be a private, private development.
That's again a private, private discussion.
But certainly if that was something that you guys agreed upon some plan for, it would be something the board would be amenable to considering as a part of their request to waive the full sidewalk requirements that they could be required to construct.
Put that little bit in.
And so if you came up with a solution that made the neighbors happy, that's good, too.
And I'm happy that the PUD was approved, I believe, that's what it is, right? The amendment, sorry, the PUD amendment was approved. I just, just out of curiosity, I saw the other day that the, is it called the Mall on Main in Bedford, where they've just built all those new Trader Joes and all those new things there? They can't find people for all of that commercial property or supposed to be there, and they're coming in asking for three hundred houses to be built.
That's right.
So they can't find people for that property. Or they can't, haven't got signed leases, they said, so sort of interesting.
It's getting more and more consistent. The old retail where you buy anything, go into any place for, for the pharmacy or grocery store or clothing or electronics, the old retail model is just getting harder and harder to develop new space for because people are buying things on the internet. The things that you can build spaces for are experiences like restaurants or Planet Fitness or a trampoline park. You know, you can't get that on the internet. So you gotta go see it. And those things, if you can find the tenants for it, you can still do commercial development for it, but the actual old model where you went in, drove your car, parked it in the lot, went inside and bought something, hardly ever can you find the people that wanna do that stuff anymore. They're lucky in Bedford to have got, you know, attracted Trader Joes and a couple of others and different developments around our town have done the things they've been successful with. Outlet malls are a bit of an exception because they're outlet malls and they're got a unique kind of a model of their own, but the idea of traditional retail development is just, and that's part of why I think the PUD concept really may not be as viable as we had hoped it was twenty-five years ago.
Twenty years ago when we did this.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I really appreciate receiving them. Are there other abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Going once, going twice. Okay, we'll close the public hearing then. And with that, invite the applicant back up to address any of the things that you heard from the public comment that we received. And also let's make a plan for continuing until we're ready and knowing when, how long that'll take and what we gotta accomplish between then and now.
Well, you need a meeting in November, don't you?
Got one.
Wait a minute.
You missed the deadline for the meeting in November, sorry.
In November, will you please? Besides, you gotta eat some turkey, too, so.
I think I've eaten enough turkey.
The idea to go into December is fine with us because we've got a lot of little things to address. We will, before we submit the sidewalk waiver, too, we will also be talking to the homeowners association because there's no use getting sidewalks in that nobody wants or not putting them where they want them, things like that. I didn't hear anything else of any concern that we're not prepared to take care of.
Sounded like they were possibly amenable to having the lights moved over near the road and be on their property as long as they're at your cost.
That was our original plan until Tim somehow convinced me I had to put it on my property. We're gonna put them back out in the right-of-way. But that's okay.
May I ask a question?
Because this is a fairly unique situation here with this private major roadway here that's really a driveway and in the PUD complex.
So in regards to the waivers, we definitely need a waiver for DW Highway of a sidewalk. Is that true or not?
Yes.
That is true, okay. Now, if the sidewalk was to go on a public easement on the other side of the road, I wouldn't need a waiver for this. Is that correct?
You still would.
Under the old regulations, it requires a sidewalk along your frontage, period. So partial, you would still need a waiver regardless of what level you're doing if you're doing nothing on DW.
Those are the justifications for granting the waiver in that we're doing something someplace else to accomplish the point.
That would make it very pleasing to us, yes.
And a minimum, the crosswalk.
Yes, I think so, yes.
It's a big plus for granting a waiver. And if we have an agreement from the homeowners association, that's the other plus that the board will look for. And I'd be very surprised if they didn't agree with us at that point.
I would, too.
Just for my client's out of vacation. And you're doing a good job with your, your homeowners association, too.
All right. Hang on a second. Let me make sure we've outlined all the things we wanna accomplish. So you gotta do a sidewalk waiver. You gotta sort out the lights and where they're gonna go. You've got various planned cleanups to do. You gotta do what the, if you're gonna move your driveway, you gotta do what the fire department and have them satisfied with whatever's gonna be the configuration for that. You're gonna engineer a way the eight-foot retaining wall to get that out of your plan.
One way or another, it's gone, so. And the easiest way is to get rid of that portion of the driveway.
Now, if they do all of that reconfiguration, how does, where does that put us in relation to peer review? Does any of that stuff require peer review to look at? Will it change some things?
At this stage, as I would with any project, I would recommend that peer review be a final condition of approval for the, whatever final revisions would require a peer review.
But meanwhile, clean up what they have outstanding.
We have to respond to all their questions.
Yes, yeah.
Then they have to pause us with the lead and respond back.
Now, the, the, the streetlights that end up on Crosswoods Path no longer need to show up on your lighting plan, just your site lighting.
I would add notes to the plan that off-site improvements will include street lighting in a location amenable to the associations.
And potentially sidewalks and crosswalks? Okay.
DOT. They're gonna check wants to D, we're gonna check with DOT.
Whether or not the driveway permit to DW Highway needs to be updated.
I agree with that. I don't know whether we would feel like that could be a condition of approval or whether that's, yeah. So it doesn't necessarily have to be resolved.
By statute, we can't make that something other than a condition of approval if that's.
I don't mind if it's a condition of approval. They take their sweet time of unresponding to somebody's next.
Oh, do they?
Surprise, surprise.
I have not heard that before.
Why you should be applying for it now so that.
You should have applied for it a year ago.
Tim, is there anything else that we should make sure we're noting that we have to accomplish between now and then? Okay. With that in mind, now we're ready to take up the question of continuance until.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this application till December the third of this year with no further notice to abutters, but with the guarantee that the applicant is involving the homeowners association.
It's a strange guarantee.
Is that okay?
I'm not sure exactly what you mean by that.
Yeah, December third is a Tuesday. That's the right day.
Other than the homeowners, I don't suppose there are. All right, then I'll take you that bit out.
It's all right. We will always talk to the homeowners.
Then I recommend that we make a motion that we continue this thing till December.
But I don't guarantee that. I'm relying on others to respond back to it.
Yeah.
December the third in, at seven PM in this room.
Okay, there's a motion to continue December third at seven PM with no further notice to abutters. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, but I won't.
Second the motion? You wanna comment on it?
The next one is December seventeenth. That's, if, if he, he's uncertain whether he can make the third. That's what I was asking.
Oh, I didn't get that from you. You are, do you wanna be on the seventeenth instead of the third?
I prefer the seventeenth. My client wants the third.
I will be happy to have that made.
I'm always made in my practice to do what my client wants.
I'll be happy to amend the motion.
Hang on a second. I don't know that we. You want the seventeenth? All right. Then let's change the motion to the.
Change the motion to the seventeenth of December.
My second will be for the seventeenth.
Seconded for the seventeenth. Seconded for the 17th, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 4-0-0. All right, we'll see you in a couple months.
Okay.
Have a nice Thanksgiving season.
See you then. Okay, I've got an agenda in this pile somewhere here, here it is. We are at discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern, I have one item that is presented to us tonight, it is some considerations of Barbie Court, which was part of the Cota subdivision, and what we have before us is a memo from Don Tumala, our deputy director and town engineer, recommending that we.
Recommend acceptance.
Well, before acceptance, we've got to recommend that we accept an irrevocable standby letter of credit in the amount of $50,066.78 as essentially a maintenance bond for this property.
Correct. So the, the recommendation would be establishment of the maintenance bond and acceptance of the roadway by the council.
Yep, and the maintenance bond is, in this case, a letter of credit instead of a traditional bond. And the recommendation to the town council that they accept Barbie Court comes with the condition that up until the time that that happens, the applicant continues to maintain Barbie Court, curb to curb, as the deputy director put it. I have no reason to think we can't handle all of that in one motion if someone were so inclined.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of Don Tumala, the deputy director and town engineer, for the development of a standby letter of credit, and also we send a, a wish to the town council that they should accept Barbie Court.
Second that. Second, with the conditions in the memo.
Yeah, with all the conditions, yeah.
Tim, is that anything, any details we need to add to that?
Nope.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Abstain.
One abstaining, 3-0-1 to take that action. With that, are there any other discussion or possible action regarding items of concern?
I think we did it at the planning and zoning administrator's report tonight.
Yeah, I think we did spend a little time with that, but I don't know if anybody was holding back any goodies that they wanted to make sure.
No, I didn't hold back at all.
All right, then that brings us to the approval of the minutes of October 1, 2019. What is the will of the board?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, we accept the minutes as printed.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second it for a discussion, but I, I was not present, so.
Okay.
Theoretically, I shouldn't vote for them, but, okay, Tim says it's okay, I'll vote for them. I do have a couple of questions, what, if we have time for discussion of this. One of the questions I had had to do with item number two, under the planning and zoning administrator's weekly report, you got a report from Robert Price on a bunch of administrative.
That's per the requirements of our new regulations, we're required to update you on administrative approvals.
Okay. What I would suggest is, and now maybe he did it at the meeting, is tell us what they are. In other words, telling me you approved the home occupation doesn't really tell me anything, to be honest. I mean, I, I would expect to know what the, what the granting was, you know, the, I would expect more detail, let's put it that.
You can work out however, we can work out however you want that to take place, I, this was the first time, and I wasn't there, and I honestly didn't tell you.
For future, for future, I would like to know what the, what the approvals were, you know, what they were for.
So I'm, I want to push back on that a little bit, so the home occupations are usually the low in number, and they're easy to say, oh, it was a hair salon and a doggy daycare and a whatever.
Yeah, that's all they have to say.
But there's 12 tenant changes on here, and nine minor site revisions, and the ADUs are obviously what they are, what they are, but there's an opportunity for there to be quite a lot of information that Robert would be expected to have at hand.
This is from the beginning of the year, this is.
This is the whole year.
If he has to give a monthly report.
It's going to be much different if we're doing it on a monthly basis.
I, I just remember some discussion when we adopted this regulation, to try to make sure it wasn't burdensome on the staff to be able to prepare the information, and to provide us with some basic information, that if we had further questions, we could all individually kind of take at, take a look at if we wanted to. But if it's not burdensome on the staff to be able to have that kind of.
I think if we're going to be doing it once per month, they're really, there's going to be months where there's nothing, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Tim, and thanks, Nelson, for the suggestion, I will withdraw my resistance to it.
Good, thank you, thank you, otherwise I'd approve, we've got to take a motion of a.
I thought you had a.
We'll minutes right now, anyway.
Yeah, we're doing minutes anyway. You had a second item in the minutes that you're.
No, that was it.
You said you had two.
Well, I have another question, doesn't have to do with the minutes.
Okay.
Let's, let's let that go, and let's continue.
Any other discussion on the minutes? Okay. Now, having looked at Robert's rules of order on countless numbers of occasions on exactly this question, anybody that's a member of the board can vote on any set of minutes for the board, you do not have to have been at a meeting to vote on the minutes.
Okay.
The minutes are simply a record. Now, if you choose to abstain, that's up to you, but you do not have to, that is a misperception that's out there.
Okay.
With that in mind, it won't make any difference if you abstain or not, we're still, all in favor of approving the minutes of October 1st, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
I'll abstain.
3-0-1 to adopt the minutes of October 1, 2019. Thank you for that, that concludes the business that we have, although Nelson, you had another question.
Well, it had to do with another, since you were on the subject of, of flutter flags there in the last minutes, there was also a complaint that I wrote up for 330 DW Highway,